Darlene and our and this guy Ryder is going to do indication and we'll stand with the plate.
I'd like to say thank you that we've all gathered here today, Lord. Be with those that are less fortunate than we are, God, and be with those that are serving our country, Lord. Be with our officers and our firefighters, Lord. Be with those that are so diligently serving around our country, Lord. Be with our aldermen and aiters. They seek to serve the union to do the things for the city and to, um, to do what's best here, Lord. We just thank you for them and we thank you for their service in Jesus' name.
Roll call please.
Mayor.
Here.
Alderman Reesner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Harris.
Here.
Alderman Johnson.
Here.
Everybody had a chance to let over the minutes of a regular city meeting of August eighteenth, two thousand fifteen. I'll make a motion for pass with no changes. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything on streets. Mike's pretty much been handling all that stuff. Uh, I'm going to play some fire for Vice Mayor Anderson.
Chief White and Phil have been leading boards for, uh, some training and, uh, so that's what I have for police department, um, and Ridgestone Fire Department for August eighteenth through September fifteenth. They had three fire calls, nine medical calls, and one missing is a call which was a car wreck. And I know those were in the city outside of the city's four. And, um, so that's what I have for Mr. Reesner, Chief Reesner.
I actually have Chief White's report here.
Oh, I did not see him tell me that he had, but I didn't see it right. Oh, okay, here we go.
That's, this is a different.
You know, actually I do have that. I'm looking right at it.
This is a different report.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, he says here that officers continue to do a good job with the neighborhood watch and traffic enforcement. Acts were up and officers were working in those areas where accidents occurred to try to bring more awareness to the problem. He said he is looking into other grants to try to find something to help us with e-tickets as well as court software. The G H S O grant fell through on that project. We have burglary at Bataga last month and Officer Tomlin had a suspect encasped that same day. All of our offices are working hard to clear the cases that come into our department. We have had a home burglary last week on Hazel that should be wrapped up this week. They've also received a case court that that we should receive the next few days in the L E S O program. That's Chief White's report. That's on White's.
Don't take his own toes over there.
I was already seeing already the bread restaurants closed, uh, unfortunately. Walter Press was having to resign off of the board. He has stroke and, uh, he was not doing too good, so we're going to do three points of work. Sorry to hear that.
Yeah, I too.
Yeah. No, yeah. Um, let's see. So they give remember Walter in our prayers. I was watched right out. Uh, finding the zoning has coming up this Thursday. They, uh, we have zoning requests for eighteen sixty-eight, eighteen seventy-eight Springfield Highway. Uh, we're also having that time. And what is one of the deals has a special exception request for, uh, barwood, pleasant accessory, shed door. I'll let your attention when that time comes. Other than that, that's pretty much it.
Correct. It's kind of a park or a parade. Uh, our building has been erected, it's been digged, it's pretty much waiting on prices for railing, bumper part, street one. Uh, we're also trying to finish up the ceiling and some of the trim work in the next couple of weeks. Uh, festival is obviously still on for October the third, uh, capable of around nine. We're going to have blowups, a lot of music, a lot of vendors, emissions five all of it and five down there is free. That's pretty much all of it.
Let's go back to Alderman Harris for these others.
Okay. Metering station at Marcolb School was, uh, in an automobile accident. Uh, we have not got the exact figures on what it's going to cost for the recorder that is destroyed. Uh, that's supposed to be coming by the end of this week, I'm presuming, hopefully by the end of this week. We have some lighting number that I've never counted against before, presenting any kind of. Uh, we've also asked, uh, Keith and I have talked about it and we're going to actually build a larger, uh, cover to go over that. It's actually going to sit down over, uh, over the foundation, uh, to kind of get some more support in case this ever happens again. Plus, uh, we're going to make a bigger lid for it and so we can actually change out that dingree and everything without having to rip off. So that's in the makings. Uh, barwood, as far as the street portion goes, uh, we got started on that yesterday. They started doing all the cuts. I did fail two cuts. Uh, I got it too close to driveways, so I had to recut those and then did not, uh, did not cut any culvert, which is all part of the, uh, the deal. So, but Heath and I both are out there several times today and no crews showed up today, Lord. So hopefully that'll be getting this going here shortly. Okay, Beaver Dam situation, Keith reported to me and said it's starting to become a problem again. Uh, half up with, uh, T W R A, uh, and notify him of the situation. Uh, also here in my N T S training, or N T A S, excuse me, N T S, uh, National Flood Insurance, I was able to talk to a bunch of, uh, people down there also, uh, that were having the same problem in hand, especially Ashen City. I'm not going to do Ashen City, which is explosive. But, uh, uh, T W R A has said that, uh, the beavers have become a nuisance and that we are approved to take them out in any means necessary in order to stop them, uh, living again. Uh, on September twenty-second, I'll be taking, excuse me, the certification course for the, uh, E P S C and the, uh, S W P P P, uh, for inspectors as required by state laws. I'll be tied up.
What, what is that right there? What is it?
Uh, it's the course, uh, the certification course for inspectors for the, uh, E P S C and the S W P P P.
What is that actually? Cause I don't know what that's.
Okay, E, uh, E P S C is the Erosion Prevention and Settlement Control and the S W P P P is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what you brought up, uh, a couple months ago.
That's a, that's a good course.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay. I mean, I'm certified for that.
I've also contacted, uh, T Doc, uh, now Mr. Louis Bazar, he's actually over third region out in, in, out in our area concerning, uh, the culvert, the four foot culvert that's on two fifty seven, going under two fifty seven, uh, seeing pictures and everything else, uh, he's going to get somebody out here as soon as possible. Uh, it's pretty, it's pretty much collapsed and it's causing, uh, very good dip in the hood right there, which you probably should have come to the front. Uh, at the same time, I'm going to be talking to him about, uh, the yonk interception, uh, about the culprit in that area. Simple reason being is it's because it's in there right away and for us to do any repairs, I'm not sure it's okay with them. Hopefully Walter out here will repair themselves. Louis doesn't want to help. And that's pretty much it for utilities. And I just want to say that, uh, Keith had another accident, uh, goes home, he busted his roof up pretty good and ruined himself up pretty good, so he's back at work and, uh, he's busting it. Uh, applaud Keith and Keith, they've been really out there getting with it and, uh, keeping me informed on everything and I just, uh, I want to thank you all.
Thank you. Good job. Strong five.
Hi, everything's running right along, pretty smooth. I did hear the return call from Gary Jekyll, uh, he's the gentleman from M T S that kind of oversees our census and he's supposed to be finding some, uh, phone letters for us to be, to mail out and then the one that we got sent to the state for approval of doing the census. But, uh, the mayor assigned soon as I figure out what has to be on the letter to send to them. Bye, look out.
Strong C report.
Josh touched on the Bluegrass Festival. We're still accepting application for vendors, uh, for the festival. Uh, Mike has also spoken about the accident up here at the metering station. Mr. Thomas, which is the grandfather of the gentleman that hit the metering station, he has, uh, reached out to us twice for a bill on that, uh, situation, so he is trying to keep in contact with us to make sure that that gets paid for. And, uh, Ms. Melanie Puckett, uh, called and wanted to use our facilities to do a job fair this Friday from ten to one. She is, um, trying to staff a, uh, block factory in Portland. They're looking to hire forty people, uh, nine fifty an hour and it's going to be a, um, assembly type job. So they'll be using, uh, this meeting room on Friday at ten to one.
Have you talked to anybody about the sign that the gentleman took out? I have.
No.
Yeah.
No.
As far as what price here?
Good person, Mr..
We should do it at your same price.
Should be the same price as the one they took out on the other one.
Okay, that was seventeen ninety-five, fifth one room, searching it correctly.
Right. That included some, some, uh, additional signs. I think that big sign was fifteen hundred dollars. I'll turn back to the ones. Okay, when they took out the other one, they took out some smaller ones that had, uh, yeah. Did make that out up here.
They took everything out up here, including the lighting that we have up here. There's a flagpole gone also, Keith?
No, this one up here only got the, uh, sign and all the shrubs and the light. The flagpole and the scholar sign and the other sign are still intact up here.
So we have to do a little on the front yard.
Okay. I wonder if this sign at all, uh, repairable?
No, they destroyed it.
Are they really?
Well, it's kind of like that.
Yeah. Well, so how about a sandblaster seater or something?
It is, but it's real soft.
Yeah.
It's durable, but it's real soft. It's kind of hard to knock off, you know, that with a drum, right?
At Wicker City, have you think it started, have we gone anywhere with the other sign yet?
No, it's still a fourth report. The attorney's not, uh, called back or anything. I did let Phil know that, uh, the warrant had been, uh, to put it back into court for her to pay, but she said that's why I can't give them, because the courts do not want them, they, they don't want to receive the money which would be paid for.
So they don't want to go with it?
Right.
All right, we're responsible for it.
So do we need to put this back on or do we have to?
Probably we might have contacted back to the attorney and find out how she's going to pay for it.
Cause how long was it she was going to pay that out?
Two, two years. Two years, seventy-five dollars a month if my memory's right. So the courts do not want it?
Robinson County, she said we're not there. They do want to do funding.
I wonder if a trustee, uh, a private third party could act as a collection source for that.
She said, Phil said she could draw up the paper so that they signed the note type thing, but if, if she defaults, she's going to have to take her back to court, just like you would.
I mean, either way, we want to take her back to court if we take the payment option two.
Well, she, it's going to have, it's going to have to go before the judge, uh, so I can get presupposed to it.
All right, it's going to business mercy services, Hummer.
Uh, well, with Jeff not here, not much point bringing it up, but, uh, it's been sitting there for several months now and I know we talked a year ago about getting the, the lights even prepared for, for bad weather and everything. It's, uh, I mean, I know it's been painted, but, uh, nothing else has been, been done to the unit. I know it needs batteries. I don't know why we can purchase the batteries, where it will run and whether to move it or use it. I thought it would be purchased.
Have you not seen the purchase over and on?
Not for a lead to the clay.
We purchased, we purchased a lot of batteries for the bulldozer and the roadrunner about two months ago, so that might have been purchased for, but you might have seen.
And the truck that we sold, we put the batteries in there.
Your knowledge, has he explored, uh, mining packages and the emergency equipment, uh, stuff?
But I know he, he put Officer Morris over that project, but I don't know whether they all.
I do see the lighthouse, uh.
You know, you had one bid last time I was out, but.
No, most of them, when I saw the lighthouse out here.
Well, it's time to act on that, so I'll check on that. He'll be, you know.
As far as his bids, I think he's already offered his services to help Officer Morris do this time. I can't see us, one trucker's lighthouse is going to two thousand dollars to put up a few lights when this thing's not going to run, but.
No.
Two or three times a year and there's not been any details, but I don't either. Uh, that's not a big deal either, so I don't know.
There's a lot of other places we can get lights, only not super jerks.
I mean, we're not, we're trying to light it up like a regular police car.
Well, I understand they wanted some type of flashers on it was the main thing they were trying to put on there or it would be insane. Bad weather.
I mean, uh, utility, I mean, uh, snowplow unless it's paying only four, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's probably total wired and everything, probably about seven hundred dollars for lights and everything, but that's cut off sweet, that's all that's still.
I think we'll come second and go on to new businesses.
Yeah, probably about two hundred for a wire and a, as far as the lights.
Our sworn orders, two thousand fifteen, one oh seven, zoning ordinance, knocking down the road, that was such a zoning order. This is pretty much what we talked about. I want to thank the wife, not the wife.
Yeah, now this is, uh, basically, well, this is our second reading.
So I'm saying this is what we talked about.
Oh, yeah, okay. Now, this is, uh, I'm looking at some changes to, uh, C or section. Let me start from the beginning here. This is going next to man, uh, going next ninety-five, thirty-four, the zoning ordinance of the city of Ridgestone. And what we are amending is, uh, article five, uh, section five point zero five two point one C one, general servicing district. What we are adding is a, uh, sentence C, which is no sale of rental, no sale or rental of automobiles, boats, motorcycles, or motorized vehicles shall be located on property having frontage on or access to U.S. Highway forty-one. At the same time that, uh, we passed this on the first reading, we actually have a development plan concept that is on the back that was done in two thousand two, goes to two thousand twenty on other commercial areas that, uh, we can rezone according to their plan. And so anybody else wants another dealership, uh, in our city still have that option to put one in, it just will not be on Highway forty-one south.
Was that Old Springfield and King Street?
Yeah, Old Springfield and King Street, that's right.
Are you zoned, is that what you're saying, or naturally re-zoned?
It would have to be rezoned and we can rezone from.
That's how many areas that will be available, put anything in that besides what's already there.
That's correct.
Good on you.
Uh, so I can make a motion if we go ahead and, uh, pass this ordinance, I'll set it through you. Uh, you were missing number, uh, zero one five, one oh seven.
Hold on a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
All the motions carried. Go on position. This other one's not on here, runs as well, she's actually got another, yeah, two oh five, I think we'll have to do that. But I'm trying to get to you here in just a minute, okay?
Aye.
Uh, Mrs. Ordinance, two thousand fifteen, excuse me, two thousand fifteen, one oh eight, off-street parking, this is brought before us from the planning board, I understand, from Mr. Harris. Uh, this is basically, uh, basically our ordinance, uh, elaborating is you can't park your car if you're driving in your yard or a boat or, pretty much anything.
Any vehicle in the front yard.
Uh.
I mean, enforcement on that is totally impossible, so I make a motion to not accept this.
Hold on a second. All the favors say aye.
I was going to say this, I, I think a little bit more study about some type of control over some of the mechanicking that I see taking place that seems to be, uh, into the second, third month in some locations in our city. Uh, perhaps some.
We're talking about, I'm talking about, I'm not here, I personally, I don't.
I was going to get you fixed, Mike, but I'm afraid, thank you, Mom.
Unfortunately, he's been waiting on some parts, but he's doing a terrible job on them.
Is he really?
Yeah. Right, yeah, he can, so that's why I haven't done anything as far as restrictions.
All right, it's going to, uh, C T two fifty-three, debt obligation to report paving.
We just, we just need to, uh, we just need to give the details, the interest rates in the year, so we just have to.
Just a paving capital outlay though, series two thousand fifteen, face value is hundred thousand, interest rates two point eight five, tax exempt, debt obligation, the C O N, pretty much a fine, rating is unrated. General paving, a hundred percent of, uh, security is general obligation of tax care dollar by the city of Ridgestone, tie to sale, a negotiated sale, pretty much like anything we've done in the bar now. No recurring costs, none prepared, uh, no continuing disclosure obligations for the city, written debt, debt management policy, government bodies approvals already been done, uh, roots beaver, what the actual dates, that's completion date, they're down on that eleven fifteen, we're, what is it, eleven fifteen, two thousand eleven, I don't understand what that means, but.
Oh, this, this was a renewal, that's another renewal.
This is a renewal, okay. All right. Submission report was emailed, state local finance, public debt forum, Tennessee God God, pretty much, I think regardless, we're here, we have a vote on that, fast, if you can review it.
Yeah, we just need to.
Public hearing, fine, fine. Next one's report on debt obligations, the city of Ridgestone Natural Gas, face value fifty-six thousand, four hundred forty-three dollars eighty-eight cents, interest cost three point two, tax exempt, capital lease, unrated, this is on the, uh, escalator, if I'm correct on that, yeah, there it is, two thousand fifteen, thirty, E two C R escalator.
And that's really all we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you, did you, did you ever, did you figure out?
Yeah, I didn't know.
Next thing would be the, uh, less, I'm, I'm not cleared this myself, we, the lease so long.
Well, I left the board out there.
Okay.
Um, just been trying to look at all the different departments and trying to do some cross-training and things. I was going to check if the board be interested in having, uh, announce, it doesn't matter who the officer is, but, uh, I think they have to go get some type of education on the L S O program and have a second officer, uh, to get cross-trained on that program.
Uh, I always thought we should have anyway, because I don't can't either. We had that problem in John's school, so, uh, can you make a motion?
Well, now, I hadn't thought before, officer, anybody's interested in sending, getting approved in that program, but.
Was Bill doing anything?
No, Jeff's been there.
Yeah, I don't feel he was shopping on it, but, uh, I don't, I don't think anybody has a problem with, but another officer up there, I don't mind.
It makes sense, like, you have Brian involved in that since he's over, I don't think he's already, and also kind of tied that in, whereas he, he's kind of getting educated on, on the camera, can, can do with maintenance and stuff on him. I think he's starting all of his stuff.
Okay.
Supposed to be.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, I'd like to see Brian, he qualified, told him to get him, uh, on all this training's got to be done now. Are we looking at painting all the time to go and take the classes or doing those these time a little time?
I think it's worth it to the city. I, I mean, it costs us a little time, I don't have issues with that personally. But then I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Officer Morris as an additional L S O officer.
Hold on a second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Officer Scarry, no opposition.
Aye.
We want to check with him. She's putting over. I was like, you got a problem?
Yes, well, buddy.
Ryan, you are in line.
Yeah, just been longing it.
Next thing would be the gas shed. Is that, is that the same shed we're talking about, the old property?
Well, we, uh, we've gathered a fair amount of equipment, some nice equipment. Uh, I, I don't know if y'all would want to try to just get some, some pricing from somebody about getting you some, some type of, acts out of property for the stolen.
Yes, absolutely.
We need to get some type of building up at the old house up there, I thought it was tearing down or whatever, for all the other equipment you just acquired too, because this is setting out the weather.
Well, that's the equipment, equipment I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so then I've got the small equipment for what we can use, the containers that we got also.
Can you be some, can you be some big enough where I have something under?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, I'm talking about the dozers and the, uh, all that stuff, big stuff. We got all those generators and all that equipment.
Yeah, well, they're all the ones that might get to somebody else.
The big gas shed, you're talking about for the actual equipment that'd be required, right?
Well, I, if we have some stuff for the gas part, I guess, if there's been no shed, I mean, they can share it.
We need to put a big shed up there, we just, you know, we need to talk about salt, need four bins of salt and, I mean, or, uh, if we solve, that's something we can put under there. We've got a lot of equipment and, and actually, uh, we need to have the front fenced off to be in compliance with the, what L S O wants, the L S O office wants, so.
It's a hundred and ten, it's a hundred and ten feet across that are made.
See, what, if we can get, uh, kind of a plat.
What the property line down to the, I don't know, but I think that's the, uh, like the water company's house or something they purchased property from us on. I think it was a hundred and nine point seven something. It is a gate with a fence across from it.
What, uh, well, speaking of fencing, we want to go ahead and get some pricing on fencing, so we can get that down.
I think fencing would help us also with, uh, seizures from the police department.
He's got it.
I'll send him up to, uh. I thought they changed something, we've talked about this with Jeff, I have, uh, it's not as, and time, Mr. Officer Tomlin might know a little more. Instead of, if you get a B one now, you can't just seize their vehicle, you have to go to court and, like, or something. They changed something in legislature because legislation's.
Okay, so how would you, so.
Yeah, it's, it's been in the last six months because we were going to, uh, when we made our first sale, we were going to actually push to get the fencing up or we could start making more seizures and Jeff said that's. we were gonna actually push to get the fencing up where we could start making more seizures, and Jeff said that's basically gone away. Because the sheriff's office, the sheriff's office is not making as many impounds as it used to now do that. I don't know what, I wish Jeff was here tonight to explain that, but we, we did discuss it. Either way, we did fence up.
Yeah. I make the motion to get some pricing on fencing, uh, and, and the shed.
Before we make that motion, it, it, Cas, you know, I think what we need to do is at least have some type of program established for the pricing. And so, what, what I'll do, if you guys give me a plat, have a little bit of topo, I'll design it for us and then show it to you. And then if you guys like it, let's get some pricing. I mean, I can design the shed and the concrete and the bin for the salt and everything. I can do that just at my office.
Basically, I think, uh, we're not gonna, like, we're looking at loose salt, we're talking about, like, in bags, the pounds of bags. This is just basically, uh, in my mind, something 60 foot wide, and that way we can continue to add on to it later on.
Stay away in law and so on that, so...
Yeah.
But still, I can do it. That way we can put it out and, you know, get some pricing.
To do loose salt, you'd be almost impossible because we're running the salt spreader over back of that home. And so, really, it's, you know, bag sauce and a whole lot.
It was, it was $5,000 to buy the, uh, the insert going back to truck that you could dump in with the backhoe. Last year we took it to us, $5,550.
Wow.
It would take us several years to recoup that, uh, unless we start handling that man later, which I hope we don't.
Yeah, you're a good book, especially on that. That's my problem.
Well, we'll get tile and plat, and that way, plus we'll know how much fencing we need to get some pricing on us.
Pretty good. And also, even on the fencing, uh, you know, there's all kinds of, you know, extra things you can do that makes it extra nice when you shut up. Maybe have code, you push, fence opens, no one has to have a key, all kind of. And so, we'll talk about what we, what we want, and then we can make it happen.
Tom, I can dig through those plaques, I've already got them on my computer, and I'll go through the topics.
Yeah.
Take care of it. I actually paid Mr. Bull, who last year recruited $85,000 to survey that lot, so he shouldn't have it on his local survey.
We're on that side, we're, we're on that side. We're gonna do the hats. We talked about tearing this thing down for 10 years. One time, I'm not burning that. I'm not burning that one time.
Well, in order to burn it, we've got all their technology, it's all...
Cast spesses, all that.
Yeah, so...
Well, you see, this thing has a big part of the property.
Well, I see one thing, uh, you think that dozer would push it over, don't you think?
It's a flat.
Well, yeah, I don't... Yeah, we're on one side, it'd be down.
We'll just see what happens with it. Is, is Oliver falling down, you wish, like we will, next one's...
I should have bought a rock with it, you know?
Well, be careful.
All right, it's going to, uh, Buddy, we've made you wait for the end of meeting here, wastewater, buddy, thanks.
Keep a little history on this, um, last couple of years or so, Metro has gone by the process of reviewing all the contracts, with cities like Rich Top, where they transport and treat the wastewater. You're one of the last ones that's, that got caught in this, and I believe it's back in this funny time when we went to, uh, Metro and, and, uh...
City girls.
And they, uh, had, uh, they paid a, uh, analysis to determine what the rates are at that time. You're actually getting a benefit on that. I think at that time, uh, you were paying Metro about $2 for, I guess, for $1,000. And in this new analysis, that's around about a dollar seventy-four. And, uh, but at the same time, what they're doing is, everybody had different contracts. And Metro was the one, we really only one time, one type contract with everybody. And, uh, so basically what, and I'm sorry to give this to you all the time, I thought we, I was off, I was off a week or you would have had this a lot earlier to, uh, to review and look at, but I will go through it as, as, as best I can. But what they, what they've done is, is, uh, set basically a rate with people, with everybody. Everybody was paying their rates and everything. So, that rate stands at $1.74. And it's going to increase, or could decrease, uh, every year based on the, uh, the consumer price index, and we'll look at that just a little bit. But, uh, one of the things that, that's a little bit different is that before they were taking care of all, all the charges, getting it from, well, I'll talk to school out here, all the way to their treatment plant. Now, this guy's going into Metro's system, but then it goes through the Willisville system, and it goes into Hendersonville system before it gets into Metro. And, uh, so the new contract with Metro states that if there's a third party, such as Willisville, Hendersonville, that you've got a contract with them. And Willisville, uh, we met with Willisville and negotiated a contract with them. And their price was, was about 74 cents per thousand gallons, and the Hendersonville's about two cents per thousand gallons. At that time, I suggested to you, call that, uh, you know, let me do a, an analysis, uh, of how this is going to impact you for the next five years. You know, let's look at everything. Uh, let's put it all on the table and see what you're doing over the next five years. So, that's basically what this is doing. On page four, if you want to start there, uh, this is, this is kind of something I put together to, uh, come up with some values, and make projections. Basically, we're, I'm only projecting for, uh, with, with the subdivision coming in, there's, there's been some new customers added there, but we're looking, uh, after this year, maybe 10 customers per year. Now, I want to be a little bit conservative here, uh, because if we're guessing high and guessing that you're going to get all this money in and it don't happen, then that could hurt you. So, we're, these are kind of conservative numbers here. Uh, the total revenue, uh, you can see that increasing, uh, and it's based on, uh, what, what's going on there. On the sewer costs at the bottom of the page, uh, and you can see, uh, my glasses on. Or the Metro, uh, charge has, uh, has been, uh, 225 and goes down to $1.74. And then I'm, the, that C I P percent increase, right under the Metro charge down the middle part of this page. Uh, I'm, I'm estimating that, that cost of index, that, uh, uh, consumer price index could go up 2.5, 3%. Uh, and, uh, that's, uh, that's how those are developed, uh, and then sewer costs you see is going up from there. The, uh, page five is, is just showing a projection, kind of about what it looks like. I'm just better to see it for me on the graph than, than it is on the table with the, uh, uh, starting from 2010 up to 2010, oh, 10 years here, past five years and the next five years. Uh, actually, that's pretty good, pretty good growth. You know, the first five has been, been a little bit, uh, slow, but it looks like it might make up. The, uh, what you're, the water that people buy and Rich Top, what they buy, and what you're, what you're sending into, uh, Metro. I mean, this looks really good. It's, it's, uh, uh, like in 2014, I think these were, uh, the last, last numbers. 23 million gallons of what was sent down to Metro, uh, and 20 and a half million, uh, is what was bought. Uh, I've seen a lot of, a lot of systems, uh, that's, you know, 20%, 30%. I live in Mount Juliet, there is like almost 80% of the flow going, uh, to Metro. So, you're doing, and that's because you've got a really high system here. It's just, if you get that other 3 million gallons out, it's, it's almost not worth it to try to go looking for it. Just...
Is this, is this comparing to people who are actually put to the sewer, their water bills are all of the water purchased?
These, these are just sewer customers.
Yeah, so it's the amount of water that the sewer customers purchase versus the amount of money.
These are sewer customers. So, I mean, that, that looks, that looks good. Uh, a lot of systems, we'd love to see that kind of, uh, that, the difference there in, in green and blue. That's called infiltration, infiltration inflow, uh, and you just don't have a lot. Only, uh, the next part of it, capital improvement. Uh, this is something that, uh, met with, with, with the city staff here and, and with, uh, with Mike and Paul. Uh, we, we looked at, you can't say, and we, we looked at, uh, over the next five years of, of what's going on in Rich Top, and, and I put in here basically what you're doing and what the developers are doing around here. And the reason I put this in, uh, with the developer, the Rich Top station, and I've got this, uh, from Dave Love, and he sent this, and I understand, plus the cost of the, the tanks, the pumps and connections. The reason I put this in is, is that your officer should pick this up and show it on the depreciation schedule. Whether he does that or not, I can't say. I wanted to do it because I know that, that it should be done, and it does impact your depreciation schedule here. And you'll see this, as far as the accumulated depreciation over the next five years, it's about $25,000. And we'll go into that a little bit later to, to show you what, what that, where that depreciation comes in, play with, right now.
Right, not run with capital improvement, 6,500 per connection based on Rich Top station. That is extremely less than what we once paid.
Probably so. Probably so.
Where it was $10,000 per phase on there too?
Yeah. But the, uh...
Can I ask you a question? Why is it so much cheaper now?
I really don't know. I, I, you know, we asked that directly from, got that directly from the contract, from the, from the... I, I...
Before we go any further, can I ask you one more question about another stone here? Maybe just by our new contract, but, uh, I think it's on page four, the total sewer costs, 2015 and 72, 796. And when you go, you're basing that on an estimated sewer cost over that period of time, right?
Uh, well, this, this past year, yes.
Because even though you're, you're estimating almost, almost 11,000 are increased in one year.
Well, you went from 220 to 225.
Yeah, I understand. So, from 2015 to 2016 are huge difference.
Right, basically where that number comes from is the flow to Metro.
Based on the new contract?
Uh, no, no.
Our contract.
If you'll see, if you'll see under that, uh, kind of at the, you know, the top third or sort of the page, uh, where it says flow to Metro and millions of gallons, and right under that, Metro charge for 1,000 gallons. I just want to flow those 2 gallons out of that.
Okay. There's just such a big difference of increase in that one year there as well.
Yeah.
Are all the cities supposed to be under the same contract by a certain kind of time? That's what I understood from the main, right?
Yes, they're, they're, I think everybody's supposed to...
They wouldn't have worked.
Still, I, I had, uh, worked with, uh, with Willisville and, and Bell Need and Brentwood two years ago. And, uh, wasn't it there?
The other difference between 2015 and 16 is that there's 500 non-customer courses, 534. We think that Rich Top station subdivision...
Yeah, made that make a difference just by, by, I think, I think it's 10,000 or over 10,000, correct?
Yeah, additional flow. The, uh, the Waterwood project is on here, uh, that will come out in your cash. Also, we talked about truck, uh, new truck, and put it on this fiscal year 2017, wouldn't? Uh, we're, we're currently, uh, yeah, actually in the, uh, in, in this, the, uh... Where are you on that Waterwood project?
We're just starting.
Just starting.
Just...
Don't have any books anyway. Uh, but, uh, everything else is just developer-driven. On the, uh, debt service, on page, uh, 10, uh, this shows your existing, uh, debt, the capital outload, late in 2003. Uh, one of the, yes, the original state revolver loan, there was that, I think that's original, uh, 1998. And it's about to, it will expire probably soon after, uh, this, uh, the, and the state revolver loan, 1999.
Probably any agencies coming out of wastewater, any type of wastewater, uh, grants, programs, any more at all?
Yeah, there are, uh, rural development has grant, and state revolver loan actually has a grant also.
Are they worth trying for?
Well, it, it depends on what you want to do.
Well, maybe you can always work the sewer the entire town.
Right.
The position we're at now, regarding what we need to build, it's a highway to the full sewer the entire town.
A lot, a lot of this depends on the, uh, their median income, uh, the city, uh, when they look at that, uh...
That's the biggest problem with most areas.
If you have, if you have areas that are, you know, having a lot of failing septic tanks and you improve that, that would go into also. So, there is some possibilities that...
How much is their grants? What is the highest one they have?
Rural development, I think theirs, you can get a 30% grant with them, uh...
That's fine, but you just have to carry that.
The, uh, uh, state revolver...
You got any dollar on that first one there?
Right, the state revolver loan, I'm not exactly sure how they, uh, do their grant program, but they've got extremely low interest rates, like 1.25 or 1, 1 point something, it's, it's really low. But, uh, you guys could actually pay off, uh, have enough money to pay off the state revolver loan at the point of 1998 if you wanted to, and save a little bit of, it's about $8,000 to you to save. So, choose to do that.
From 1998, you're talking?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, we could pay off the 1998.
You lost one, got two others, you know, they got one.
We could pay off two of the loans and roll that money over and pay that on the, the last loan, not that one off, that one three.
And...
When does that last loan expire? Do you remember, Cal?
2019.
2018?
On page 12, those are cash analysis. The cash analysis is something that I've, uh, come up with. You, you really can't just pick up your audit and, and find these numbers easily. And they're, they're there, but it, it takes a little while. But what I've done, uh, I've set this up just like you would a budget for your own house or household. You've got so much money coming in at the first of the year, and, and 2014 is, is the last audit. And you begin 2014 with, uh, $263,000, $156. And then you have, uh, some of your income sources, your service charges, which you charge for sewer, and some other revenue, and you have some interest income. And then you have your metro costs there, your sewer additive, the other expenses, we'll look at that in just a minute. You're in lieu of tax, uh, so you have, uh, total income, total expenses there, and then your debt service. Uh, and you can see that's going down 1919, it's, it's going, it's really dropping, but it's, it is dropping down. Uh, so your income, less expenses, you made $23,000 in 2014. Now, 2015, it looks like you could lose a little money during that year, but you got to make... but you got to make it up a year in 14 of 498,000. And that, you know, that's, that's really a small loss in what we're projecting for 2015. And 2016, because, you know, that Borrowwood Project will be coming out of that. But from there, you see some pretty good gains. And I try to, in these projections of service charges, I try to be conservative in thinking that you might, you know, pick up a little bit more, you may, may look at it pretty good. But at the end of 2019, you're, you're almost $700,000. So obviously, if you pay off a loan, that's going to drop that down because that's where that money will come from. Is that that? Any questions on this, on the cash? Other expenses, we just went line item here across the years to estimate these other expenses that showed up on the previous. Page 14 is just a graphic analysis of sewer costs. And that does include the metro costs, the Goodnessville costs, the Andersonville costs, and the sewer additive costs. That just kind of looks, the way it looks going out to 2019, it is growing. On page 15, this is the Consumer Price Index per, this is what Metro uses and what Goodnessville will use. I'm estimating anywhere, you know, 3% to 3%, maybe 3.8%. You can see what it's done in the past, over the past 10 years. We had one down here. And if it does go down below zero, you know, your rates will drop. That's just kind of what it is. Page 16 is just kind of a graphical analysis of what's going on with your total income being blue, the rate of your expenses, the gold, whatever you have cash. As you can see, your cash is going up quite a bit in the last three years of this analysis. From here, your, you know, your debt is dropping down quite a bit there. Net position. You don't have any problem with net position, but let me tell you, there's a lot of communities that has to raise rates, will have to do because of this net position. Net position is basically your total assets, base liabilities. I put this in here, it comes almost verbatim from a sheet in your audit. And it's, there is a Tennessee municipal code that basically says that if you have two years of negative change in net position, that's bottom line here, your distress, your terrible, you know, controller, you know, you will get a next bill from a controller, you know, you have to face that, you're not, you're not probably. But the difference in this and the cash analysis, you'll see in the operating expenses down there, this depreciation. And you see that, you know, you've got your depreciation going up primarily because of pumps that are buying, that sort of thing. Your auditor may not include depreciation, and that's only good for you. If you change for whatever reason, have to change auditors, they may pick it up. I've included it here just to make sure. But this change in net position, this doesn't mean anything cash to you, this is a paper value that is important, that if it ever drops down to zero or below zero, you have problems. Fortunately, you don't. And you're, from a financial situation, I've done a bunch of these, and you're better, you're better financially shamed than anybody that I've worked with so far, by far. And, but this, this looks good here. The 19 is just showing the, your operating expenses versus your, this operating expenses, that's based on this net position. And then the last page is your current rates. And obviously, you may not need a rate increase. And you're going to have, you know, about, at least about 2019, they're going to have some cash. You might be able to even finance something, going, work around here, maybe monitor it. Or at least pay off some loans, and that might get you there a little bit quicker too. I still want to stay on this, as far as the rate increases, according to our last meeting. This is, we're not going to have a rate increase for at least the next five years, right, under this network project.
Under the contract, under the contract.
Well, I'm with, basically, this is my recommendation. What I'm looking at here is projections, based on projections, you will not need another increase. And that's based on the things, anything different happens. The Metro rates, they will increase, and I've got those projected in here, but I got them projected like a 2.8% per year, 3%, that's going to be based on that cost of, or rather, Consumer Price Index. Now, if it goes, you know, 5% or 8%, yeah, some of those are problems there. There was a problem with some of, I don't know if you were part of one, got caught in this, but I think Brentwood did. There was two indexes, one of them was the, was this one right here, the other one was called a MAFRA. I mean, don't even ask me what that is, but it was based on just sewer systems across the nation, and they were going up at 5%, 7%, 9% per year. And it was, Brentwood really got caught in that, and their rate was really high in that project. I don't, don't know that this consumer price will go up that high. Of course, it seemed like 50 or 4% or something like that, but just keep in mind that, I mean, this, you know, this is, you know, where we are today, where we think we're going to be five years from now, you need to look at it, you know, each year. And your, the key, there's, of course, the key things. You want to make sure that your, your cash each year is increasing. If it starts to decrease, that's, that's a flag. And if you're changing net position, if that drops close to zero, you're, that's, that's another red flag. But right, as I see it right now, you're in good shape.
Great job, great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, buddy. Any citizens found answers here?
Before we get done, just one more item before we go ahead and do that.
Yes, sir.
Close summer, 12, 11 Island Drive. The church on Island Drive, 257, was condemned 15 years ago. Imagine if these 15 goals that we have to look at, hold it so long? Y'all were talking about passion, ordinance, you could handle it, but what do you want passion for? Can you give me any idea of when they're going to tear it down?
I don't have any idea, sir. I haven't heard anything about that section.
The problem we're having is originally.
Anything ever been done about it? I've brought it up a bunch of times, and y'all the ones that had it condemned.
The problem we're having is that the demolition crews that are giving bids on it don't want to give a bid because that AT&amp;T station is right there with fiber optics. That's the problem we're having.
Or, if it's going to shut there, then it's a fundamental problem.
Until we can find somebody that will want to take that on and actually demolish that, then it's, yes, sir, unfortunately, it's going to suffer.
Any other citizens? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to ask, for consideration for the city to move a, the utility, the electrical service for the, I'm not sure what the sewer station is up there, the building on Battle Wall Park. That half pole that sits behind, up on Old Highway 41, behind the sign, that it could be moved down near the sewer building, station there, I guess where chemicals are put in for smell, if I understand. Wanted to ask what needs to be done, how we can consider that. So would you possibly make this building site back there, and try to know where overall drive will be coming through?
And that's what, that's what I was talking about that intention, if we actually left it off. We've received some bids for that, and it's right at, it's exactly $58, 176.24. The city can move that pole closer to the older station, and then reattach all the underground utilities to the city side. And, you know, some, some of those two things had to be rebuilt out of it. That's the, that's the base we received, one bit we received. Best to have to rebuild it, bring it back up to today's terms versus what it was put in 1997.
Where's this driveway coming in and out of?
Highway 41, just, it already has a permit, the drive is just on the other side of the sign, coming right in there. And go behind, down below there where the county's building a detention, a retention pond for the additions to Wal Park. Got to go around that.
To the ride Elder House, basically. And that, city's, sort of, pole there, I guess.
I don't know, I don't doubt there's a deal for it, that's what I'm trying to figure out for those.
Did there was some land swap or something? You gotta give us a history, how this came around?
I don't know about any land swap, but the property we own now, we purchased property from the state.
Okay, so our pole was in the state right of?
I, I don't know. There's nothing on the deed we have showing any evidence of the right of way. Now, I'm not saying or not there, I'm just talking about what I have from the state. Okay, so I'm not trying to say what happened back in, whenever they built that highway. I know one thing, when they built the highway, there's a lot of utilities, it didn't go along the highway where they're supposed to.
Any S wants that much money to build that pole?
No, no, this is a contractual contract, it's not, it's only, it's only a half. It's just a service power over account, it's not a, actually, any S.
About one little small power to our amount?
Yeah, but it's. You have to get it disconnected, then you have to rebuild it.
Right, same.
It's a lot of hours into it, and it's.
And it's up here on the station also, during the time there. Do something temporary to keep the meeting and the station up.
I don't know, I don't think this pole right now, it's supposed to accent everything. We will, I don't know, obviously, any S is not going to disconnect it and leave that quickly.
Not considering this pole is just a little bit further up, they'll transform it, so even this is.
That's what I thought it was. They don't show it right now, I don't think they're going to show it right now.
I mean, the state would have to give us permission to do it.
For this, when they lined that road, basically, they carried. I stopped that property a few more.
From what I read, anything to state right of way, if you're a utility company, if you're not imposing on anybody else's right of way, you can't use that land. But I don't know as far as supplying electrical to the older station. Am I right? From what I looked into, that's what I can come up with. So when it was put in, the city had the right of way to do that, being it was on state property. But now things have changed, I don't know about that, I don't know.
Wonder why they didn't put the pump.
No, I'm really, we're going to see however we can here, I'm not trying to, I'm trying to throw y'all away with the bus or anything like that.
I'm not familiar exactly what you're talking about, is it dead set right in the middle of the drive?
Well, the builders and excavators up there, they all said that's, that's the route they should come in. You go down further, you got to come up the hill, more utilities, you got a steeper drive. So I didn't suggest that they did, the builder and excavators who were doing that said, this is the best route you can go, to make it go around the retention pond, not have real steep ups and downs for drive and so forth. You can't come in on the other side either, and it's, you get up near the county property.
How close is the actual road they're talking about building through that pole? I mean, is it like the age of it, or the middle of it, or, because I'm not familiar with the actual site. I know where the pole is, but I thought we were talking about.
It's not right in the middle, I have to make a very look, it's probably off, I'd say in the far, the lip, this quarter, there a quarter of it anyway. Probably a quarter, and that's probably a 12, 14 foot opening through there. I'm not a contractor.
So you're going to drive off the hillside, is what you're saying, if you had to go off to the quarter bar?
Yeah, yeah, need to be moved. Of course, if it was moved down near the pole, once it's moved, if you move, you might as well get down near the building that's out of, out of the way. But, because I'm not sure, once it starts moving, it's probably got a lot of difference you could take foot or other than making it back to the sign. That's probably where the distance comes underneath the very end of it.
And I think a lot of the cost in that is relocating all the undergrounds, aren't you? Who knows how it ran 15 years ago or whatever it was done, so that's, that's a lot of the cost that gave. It's basically a matter of roughly $6,000, trying to figure out a way, while we're down, how will we maintain the older system unless there's another way of doing it?
And they need to run the underground to the sign, under where the drive would be, that's no problem. Because I mean, all we're going to need is enough to take the surface off the, you know, gravel and put a base on the drive anyway. So it would help to keep that under there, and get connected, that's not an issue. We'll work whatever's easiest, and expect them to go all the way back around down the highway, they'll need to.
You know, if we did do something, it'd be wise for us to think about whether or not one of our generators could run that. And at this time, if we do it, make it where it could be switched over at emergency, put a generator to it, disconnect, however you do it, where when the power comes on, you don't have two of them getting it at one time. And I don't know what I'm talking about on that, but I just know there's a way. If we were going to do it, we'd want to.
Yeah, I mean, they're getting, getting into more costs and stuff like that, which we're going, we got to figure out, you know, what route we're going to do.
Yeah, we got to get into switching, it's a different type of switching system, switch over from generator or to power.
What's the timeframe on this that you're trying to, trying to do? I mean, I know you want to get it safe and possible, but.
Yeah, I mean, we've got several months, it's not like, because something's going to be built next month, we're still doing drawings, we're getting through that process.
Do you have a drawing? Do you have a drawing that you're developing at this time, that where we could take a look at it?
Well, the house will be back in the woods, I mean, we, I mean, have a rough drawing, it's not scaled, it shows how the drive would come in, something like that, yes. Yes, but it's not scaled necessarily, we're going to give you an idea of what's going on. It's just conceptual drawings, right? I don't have it with me, but I can give it if you want to see it.
I've drawn a pole, I know about one, it's like, you got, I kind of.
Yeah, it's a trouble you do that, right?
I guess I need to bring out next month, if we're still on, on actual bid, I mean, I didn't get, I didn't get another one. I like to see you call on something like that.
Just an electrical contractor.
Probably like to call and get, call somebody, get through bids or something, call three of them.
That's what I was trying to see, roughly, and then heat up, heat up, or got this bid force on this one. We guess we'll need to agree more about, we also need to find out how much downtime we're talking about with any S, so we can kind of set ourselves up for that.
We, that's a, that's expecting time, that's a thing else, because any S will not put the cap up, unless the inspector actually writes off on it, sometimes those inspectors can take a week to come out and inspect, especially if it's on an outdoor project.
Mike, I hear you say that Heath is real, is how to convert it from the generator to the electrical member, the generator will switch or something like that. Why don't you just go ahead and explore that, because sometime, the power could be off for three days up here. I mean, I know that one time, when I was having the Goodnessville, it's off for about four or five days, and snow was on the ground. I mean, I know that one time when I was down in the village, it was off for about four or five days, the snow was on the ground.
If the power's off, you're not pumping sewer down the hill though, so therefore you don't need order. If the power's off.
Okay, so I didn't know what all that, that system did, that's the only order, the, you know.
That's all, just a bunch of orders.
Makes sense. I don't really need it. How far away is the, the actual pumping station that we had that pumps it down the hill from that location?
The station, 60 feet.
Oh, so if the power's off there, it would be, it would be off. That answers my question, in other words, if the power was off there, over, you know, it would, it would certainly be off at the pumping station as well. So, is what I realized. Yes.
We'll look into it, try to get some kind of answer for you. I don't know anything about that person, I guess, Mr. Reader's going to look into the actual contractor, try to get three bids and figure out what direction it goes. Try to get as fast as we can.
I think what he's asking is if we get these free bids and they all come in 6,000 dollars, are we prepared to pay for it or are we going to look at some kind of joint project with him? But I mean, like I said, it was put together, when it's put up, it was on state right away. So who does the liability fall back on and I think that's really what he's wanting to know, is what we're prepared to do.
I believe, to me, it'd be a joint venture.
You bought the actual property from the state, I understand that correctly.
The state was up on the school board there in that, uh, detention on situation.
I'm sorry, I can't understand the state.
It's on the state.
Okay. But Josh, I understand if his move is going to be brought up the code, is that what I understood?
Yeah, ask me.
Yeah, so, yeah, we, we can work through that stuff. I mean, if it's not up the code now, I don't expect to pay to get it something up the code we should be, you know what I mean, but I'll help to do.
Well, it's actually 97.
Yeah. So right now, you can very easily get into.
A lot stricter, yeah, a whole lot stricter now.
But, but if this issue.
But that can be worked out with us in the joint venture type.
But if this issue was not the product at this time, we would continue using that pole that was installed in 97 and we would have been okay, we would not have to do any. Because of this issue, it would have to, of where the codes are.
Let's see some more numbers in here, and then we'll give the board time to think about it, and then we'll see what those numbers come back.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's what we can do.
Maybe we'll get on the, on the J for next one, and I'll have some more numbers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have something else you want to bring out?
No, that, I see it, that's what I was trying to.
We got the historical board.
Just scheduled workshop for next night and October 19, Monday night with the board.
Monday night. Let me. That works. With, with the bids that come through, is that something that we could, are we allowed to pass it around through email, discuss it prior to, you have opinions on that? Is that something we? Just curious, we might have to do that prior.
Any other bids? I'll make a motion to the chair later, it's like. Oliver, say ah. I guess we can do it.